We got 5:29, we get ready to start very, very soon.
Good call.
Let's go, what do you think?
That's what we're coming.
Everybody's here? If I could have your attention, it's close enough to 5:30, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. And the first business we have is Ms. Pete's gonna lead us into the table.
Please stand.
As allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Our mission statement will be read tonight by Matt Hunt.
Alright, Mr. Chairman, the mission of the Beaufort County Schools team is to enhance the quality of life in our community by nurturing all students and educating them to their fullest potential.
Thank you. No public comment tonight? Okay. Then that carries straight to the agenda, approval of the agenda, do we have anything that needs to be added or deleted, anybody? Okay.
Move approved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
What was that, Booth?
Sir.
Oh, okay. We have motion of second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose? Okay, we have an agenda. And that carries us to board minutes. And if you'll click on those, I'm sure everybody's had a chance to look over them, there's three sets here from earlier in March.
Some move, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion of second, any discussion about these? If not, all in favor, say aye. Can you oppose? Okay, and here none, they're approved. And that carries us into public recognition, and tonight, Dr. Fitz is gonna handle that, along with Ms. Booth.
We have the pleasure of recognizing our Character Education Award winners for the month of March, and the character ed trait this month is honesty. And I'd like to recognize those students that were nominated from the K-5 area, from Chaco Winnity Middle School on the elementary side, Jay Loman, from Chaco Winnity Primary School, Jerry Keemig, from Eastern Elementary, Matthew Keys Jr., from John Cotton Taylor, Madison Swanner, from John Small, Abigail Lewis, from Northeast Elementary, Caleb Howard, and from SW Snowden, Louis Adams. And the winner from John Small is Abigail Lewis, and we'd like to ask her to come forward. Abigail, I'm gonna read what the person wrote in for you for your nomination, we're glad that you're here, okay? Abigail, again, is a student at John Small, she's a fifth grade student, the daughter of John and Angie Lewis, and Mrs. Swanner, teacher who nominated her, we'd like to ask him to stand and be recognized if they would. And I'd like to read the nomination. "I am proud to nominate Abigail Abby Lewis for the March Character Trait of Honesty. Abby is one of the most honest and trustworthy students that I have had the pleasure to work with. There have been many times that Abby has told me the truth, even though it might not necessarily be in her best interest. I know that if I want the truth, I need just to ask Abby. One specific time was when there were students picking on another student in class. Although the student is not someone who Abby regularly hangs out with, when I asked Abby if she had seen anything, she told the truth, even though others would not say so. She then played with the student at recess to try to make her feel better. This shows great strength of character. Abby stands up for what is right, and the entire class knows it. It is for these reasons that I nominate Abigail Lewis for the March Character Trait of Honesty." Congratulations.
Abby, thank you so very much. We wanna say this, that's probably the greatest character that any young person can have, is honesty. And we're just so grateful that you coming up as a little young lady from over at John Small to represent that school. So what I'm gonna have you to do, I have a certificate here for you, for prior to giving you the certificate, I'm gonna ask you if you would go around and greet and meet the board members and meet me over... Come back here just a minute. Sorry, stop right here. This is our superintendent. Okay, and then we're gonna start right around there, go around, okay? And meet me on the other side.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Abby. Good job.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Good job.
Congratulations, Abby.
Now, what I want, what I'm asking you to do is, first of all, write your name anywhere you want on this form. And after doing that, I'm gonna give you a pencil that you can remember us by, and ask you to select a book from here that you may be able to read at your leisure time.
It's over on the side. Ms. Booth?
Other side.
The other side?
There's one link.
Get a shelf. There's a banner that marked it.
Okay, alright. And we're gonna ask you to have a seat, and we're gonna call you back shortly to have a picture, okay?
I'm gonna take out a book while she's there.
Oh, your book? Oh, I'm sorry. Is that the one you want? Okay, alright.
For our middle school grades, grade six through eight, we have nominees I'd like to recognize, from Chaco Winnity Middle School, Jordan Cutner, from Northeast Elementary on the middle school side, Diamond Spencer, from PS Jones, Zoe Solano, and from SW Snowden, Jalen Moore. And the winner in our middle school is PS Jones, Zoe Solano, I'd like to have her come up. Zoe is a seventh grader at PS Jones, she's the daughter of Joseph and Tracy Solano, and was nominated by Don Johnson, we'd like to ask him to stand to be recognized. Thank you all for being here. I'd like to read the nomination. Zoe is a seventh grade science student who displayed an incredible act of courage and honesty. During a pop quiz, she witnessed a classmate cheating on the quiz. Following the quiz, she approached me and told me that she had something to tell me. She proceeded to tell me what she had seen during the quiz. After she informed me of the incident, I thanked her and told her I was very proud of her for her honesty, especially since I knew that the person she reported was a very close friend of hers. We proceeded to have a conversation about her honesty, and it was then that I realized that she had also told her very close friend, the one who cheated, that she would be letting me know about the incident. I was impressed that Zoe's sense of honesty was so important to her that she was willing to do the right thing, even though it could possibly jeopardize her friendship. Turns out, the friend who cheated came to me and confessed, and all is well with the pop quiz. It reminded me that true friendships are hard enough to withstand the peer pressures placed upon them, let alone trying to decide if being honest is more important than upsetting a friend. I was very proud of both my students that day, but the fact that Zoe had such strong convictions about the importance of honesty, I felt the need to nominate her. Zoe's strong value for honesty outweighed the possible consequences facing her personal relationships with classmates. Zoe is a hardworking, honest student and represents PS Jones Middle School in a positive light. She is a pleasure to teach, and I'm honored to have the opportunity to teach her. Congratulations.
Again, I will say to you also, it's a great character. Honesty is great, and we're just so proud of you to have that character. And to make sure that this is gonna go with you through the rest of your schooling, we're gonna give you a certificate here that's gonna keep you in remembrance of that, okay? But before I do that, I'm gonna ask you if you would greet the board, superintendent?
Congratulations.
The entire board, and meet me on the other side.
Good job.
Congratulations.
And I would like you also to select a pencil and a book. And a certificate, and I'm gonna ask you if you would have a seat, if you'd like to give us a certificate.
And our high school nominees, from early college high school, Kylie Myers, from the Ed Tech Center, Markeia Galbraith, from Northside High School, Dustin Peachey, from Washington High School, Selby Johnson, and from Southside High School, Kevin Smith. And our winner at the high school level, from Northside High School, is Dustin Peachey, we'd like to ask him to come forward. Dustin is a senior at Northside High School, son of Robin and Luke Peachey, and Holly Alli Goods, a teacher who nominated him, we'd like to ask him to stand to be recognized. Thank you all for being here. This is the nomination that was written. Dustin Peachey and another student reported to me at break duty on a school day last semester that they had found a sum of money in one of the staircases in our building. It was obvious they came straight from finding the money to report it to an adult. I advised him to take the money to the office. A student had reported losing the money earlier, and the description matched the find. She was very extremely relieved to have the money returned, and so quickly. I was proud of these students for displaying the character trait of honesty, and tracking down the rightful owner of the money, and returning it quickly. I have found Dustin to be of good, strong, moral character, and this is but one fine example. Congratulations.
For her carrying that character, and again, I'll say to you that it's a great character, and we're just wishing that this will follow you straight through not only your schooling, but straight through your life. Honesty is a most important character that will keep you. So what I'm gonna do is give you a certificate to remember you, so you can remember that, okay? But first of all, I'll have you to greet the superintendent and the board members, and meet me on the other side.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Good job. Congratulations.
And what we want to do is, we have the school emblem, the flag, the character flag, and a gumdrop for you, and we're also gonna give you a certificate, and we're gonna ask you to come around with us as we call the rest of you.
We'd like all three winners to come up if you would. And while they're doing that, in the nomination form, you may have heard me say that Dustin and another student found the money, I think it's important to recognize the other student from Northside, his name is Gabriel Cromwell, let's give him a round of applause.
Thank this one. Any parents first?
This time, we'd like to recognize the Clean School Award winner for the month of March 2016, and from Southside High School with a perfect score of 100%, I'd like to ask head custodian David Myers, DeShawn Adams, Charlie Clark, and Jerry Hamilton to come forward.
Congratulations. You're gonna get everybody, all of you. Well, we're grateful to you for how you keep our schools clean, and keep them going, and how, please pass this on to your coworkers, that we owe the board members are just so happy that you think enough of the school to do that, and we want you to continue, as you continue, we will continue recognizing you for doing the job that you're doing. This is a certificate from the board, and this is some money. This is everybody's money. Well, Jerry Lewis did. Just a quick sentence.
Child.
They're viewing the new sign tonight.
Yeah.
Alright, yeah.
It's not pretty, Charlie.
What happened, Scooby didn't send the other?
No, you're quiet. That one looked better than the song.
Well, the last two months have been keeping them winning, and that's the common side of the kingdom.
We also like to recognize those schools that had a 95% or higher for honorable mention, and for this month, Chaco Winnity Primary School had a 99.5. We had three schools with a 99%, Chaco Winnity Middle School, PS Jones Middle School, and Eastern Elementary. We had four with a 98, Washington High School, the Ed Tech Center, Northside High School, and John Cotton Taylor, and Bath Elementary School had a 95. Let's give them a round of applause.
At this time, I'd like to invite up to the podium, Mr. Gerald Barlow, who is the State Ag Education Coordinator, and I believe he has a presentation to make. A large presentation.
Thank you, and it's an honor to be here in Beaufort County. Again, my name is Gerald Barlow, and I'm the State Agricultural Education Leader, and I'm here this evening to present you with some money. In North Carolina, there are over 40,000 agricultural education students in about 310 high school and middle school programs. These students are gaining agricultural knowledge and experience that are preparing them for careers in and around the ag industry. As you are well aware of, the ag industry makes up the largest portion of the economy of our state, and generates over, this year, last year, over $76 billion into the economy of North Carolina. As a part of the Ag Ed program, our students are members of the North Carolina FFA Association, which is a youth organization, a student member, preparing for leadership and careers in science, business, and technology of agriculture. The primary purpose of the FFA is to make a positive difference and allows the students by developing that potential for premier leadership, personal growth, and career success through agricultural education. Tonight, I'm here wearing several hats, one, I'm representing the Tobacco Trust Fund Commission, and secondly, the North Carolina Agricultural Foundation. The General Assembly, in the year 2000, created the North Carolina Tobacco Trust Fund Commission. Its purpose is to fund projects that have a positive impact on farmers, their families, and communities by increasing farm income, supporting the economic well-being of rural communities, and helping farmers stay in business. These are just some of the goals of the commission. This past year, or this year, the North Carolina Tobacco Trust Fund Commission awarded $180,000 to the North Carolina FFA Foundation to improve high school agricultural education programs throughout the state. The, this Agricultural Education Program Improvement Grant has been awarded to 35 high school programs with grants up to $5,000. Tonight, I'm here to present one of these grants to the Washington High School Agricultural Education FFA Program, for a project that they're starting called Pam Pack Dairy. And this project will allow the Ag Ed Department at Washington High School to acquire some goats, to help their students learn about the milking process and the husbandry of animals and the goat industry. And with these funds, they will purchase equipment to, and soap making equipment, so their students can learn 21st century skills by turning goat milk into soap. For this project, they'll need several pieces of equipment, and that's what this money is for. And so, it's my honor this evening to present this check for $3,600 to the Washington FFA Program, Washington Ag Ed FFA Program, and I'd like our FFA members and Mr. Goblin to come forward to receive this check. We wish them well, and we thank Board of Education for your continued support of agricultural education in this county.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other recognition? Well, we certainly want to congratulate everyone that was recognized tonight, and we want to thank all those that came in. And this is the point where we take about a minute, and if you came just for that part, and you don't want to sit here all the wonderful meetings that we're getting ready to go through, I'll give everyone time to leave, but you're welcome to stay, but I understand.
Trust us, it won't hurt our feelings.
No, we're used to clearing the room out pretty quick. Thank you for coming, thank you. Well, I would say everybody came to hear you, Vosberg, but maybe they didn't. So this part, we're gonna now enter into the non-action part, and yes, Ms. Vosberg and her, part of her staff, I think, is a presentation for us.
Do you want to come on up, the ones that are helping with this?
Do I need to move? Is it behind me?
Let's saw it split.
It's on my screen too. I actually have it on my screen, but I'll move so I won't be in the way of anyone.
Okay, so in February, our grade level chairs and our sitting went to Ron Clark's Academy. And some of you may be familiar with Ron, if you want to sit down to the first slide.
May Happy Senior Year in my house.
Ron Clark is from this area, his mother used to work for the school system. He's a very energetic educator, he was the Disney Teacher of the Year, he taught at Aurora. He graduated, did some things, came back, got a job at Aurora, I don't know that it was what he wanted to do at the time, but his mother made him get a job, if you ever have heard him speak. Then went from there to Harlem, and even while he was in Beaufort County, did great things. He did the things that he is doing now at his school in Aurora. So we went because morale's low, the, it's just low, and y'all know that. And we needed to be rejuvenated, and I've been doing this for 19 years, been to a lot of staff development and meetings. This is the best workshop, whatever you want to call it, professional development I have ever been to. And I've seen firsthand how we have taken things from our two-day experience and put it into place at our school already. I mean, immediately, the week my teachers were back. As you know, as a board, third grade is one of the toughest grades to teach. If, you know that, testing, RTA, everything. And I have a couple of my third grade teachers here, my lead teachers, I mean, my right-hand folks, you know, always the go-getters, always the smile on their face, they don't get down. But this year, they were down. You know, they, when you walk past their room, you could see it on their face, and that's something I haven't experienced in the 14 years of being at Chaco Winnity Primary. This trip we took, they were so inspired, I mean, the first day, you should have heard them that night over dinner, "We're gonna do this, this, and this, you know, this is what we want to do," I mean, it was just excitement, was it scary for me? Because of all the stuff they wanted to do, but it was exciting, and I saw it, they were sparked, they were inspired, and everything had urgency, which are the things Ron Clark teaches you about. So his academy is a middle school, fifth through eighth, we are an elementary school, but the things we saw, we can take right back, and we have, and we're using them. So his strategies and instructional methods that are going on there, and the way they're teaching are things that our schools can do, K-12. He has 113 students, there's about 37 kids in each grade, so this year, the students will apply to come, and there's about, last year, there was 400 some, this year, there's over 600 children that applied to come. 37, around 37 will get in to be their new upcoming fifth grade. When those children graduate from eighth grade, most of them go to boarding schools. And the population of the school, because it is private, the reason it is private is because of the way he is funding his things, and he has all these teachers, pretty much every week, 200 to 300 teachers come through his school, and it does not interrupt instruction, and they are learning from his program, which you're gonna see from them, so I don't want to steal their thunder. But the way it's ran is why it has to be a private school. But a public school can do all the things that he has in place. There's nothing there that a public school can't do. And it's located in Atlanta, and I told you the other part. So this is a video of Ron Clark that was on CNN.
My name is Ron Clark, I'm the co-founder of the Ron Clark Academy, but also, I teach here math, reading, and global studies, and I love it, it's my passion, it's in my blood, and that's what I was meant to do.
House of Stripes, your academic edition.
For the past five years, the Ron Clark Academy, we've had over 14,000 superintendents, principals, and educators from all over the country come here to the Ron Clark Academy in Atlanta to watch us teach in our classrooms, learn about our methods, and take our techniques back to their schools. I have a lot of rules, rules for our students, and also tips for educators, things they can do. One of the most important ones is to build bonds with your students. You want to listen to them, find out things they love, and try to incorporate that to your classroom. The second thing I teach teachers is that you set the tone. When you walk in your classroom, you're bored, you don't want to be there, the kids will want to do their thing. You gotta power up, smile even though you don't want to. And the last important rule I have for educators is to have high expectations. We have dumbed it down in this country, we're dumbing down these kids, we're not expecting enough, kids will rise to the occasion. It is not about teaching them to test, we don't do that here, actually, it's kind of cool, we never mention integrated tests, it's a rule, our staff can never mention it, we never tell the kids, "You need to learn this, it might be on the test," we never talk about integrated tests, we have them, but we never mention it. When the kids come to take it, we tell them, "This is a celebration of all you've learned." What we did here is possible in public schools, this school was built by public school teachers, we were just public school teachers, I taught in New York City and North Carolina, and was able to create the same competitive environment in public schools. I get this group of people who love kids, are dedicated, who have a passion, who are given the freedom to do what it takes to help kids be successful.
And what you just saw there is what we saw for two days, it was absolutely amazing.
Hey, so I'm Lynn Whittington, I'm one of those third grade teachers that she was talking about, that's, you know, low morale and all that, and I will tell you that going to the Ron Clark Academy has totally relit that fire for teaching. It's all about the energy and the passion, and like Ron said, you know, when you go in the classroom, if you're energetic and you're excited to be there, the kids will also. And I've definitely seen that, and just the enthusiasm for teaching and learning since I've been back. I do want to say a couple things about what Ms. Vosberg said, even though this is a private school and the students have to apply, everything that Ron does is intentional, and I can say that also, because I did teach with him at Snowden Elementary my first year, he was actually my mentor, and so, the way he's teaching now is how he taught when I taught with him in third grade. So this can definitely work in public schools as well, it's not just for private schools. But when he admits the students, he purposely takes one-third of the population that are low students, that are your at-risk students, one-third's like your middle learners, and then one-third are your top students, so it's not just, he doesn't take the cream of the crop. He takes students with behavior problems, students that have the same problems in learning environment, their home life, things that we deal with daily. And he does that on purpose, because this is a training facility, and he wants public school teachers to see, you know, this is how we deal with it, and you can do the same in your classrooms back home. So anyway, so this is my classroom, since we've been back from the Ron Clark Academy, and my students are actually playing Human, Hungry Hippos here, and they absolutely love it. They come to school every day, and they're asking, "What are we gonna do tomorrow? What are we gonna do, what's next, what's next?" And that's part of the surprise, the element of surprise that we keep to, they never know what's gonna happen, so they're excited to come to school each day. All the activities that we learn are just filled with content-rich, lots of academics and rigor in our instruction, even though we're practicing these activities too. Another takeaway, I guess, that we learned from the Ron Clark, do you want me to show Do you want me to show up here? Okay. So another takeaway that we got from the Ron Clark Academy was creating a magical moment for your students, and this is something that the teachers there do about once a month. They create something in their classroom that their kids will remember for the rest of their life that has to do with what they're learning in the classroom. So we were learning about the solar system, the Earth, Moon, and the Sun, and so, of course, we had a solar system in our classroom. Everything that I did that day was from the Dollar Tree, so, I mean, it's definitely, there was low cost involved, so again, this is something that we can do here in public schools. And what actually happened here, I have an intern this year, and she was waiting outside in the hallway for my students to get there, and, you know, told my class, "I don't know what's happened, I can't find Ms. Whittington." So they moved to another classroom, and then Ms. Fosberg called down a little bit later and said, "Your teacher has been captured, captured by aliens, but I think it's safe for you guys to go back in." So the door that you see there, that is just the door. I haven't like barred my door shut, locked any kids in or out or anything like that. It's just on the face of the door. So the kids went in, and then they saw the solar system inside with glow sticks and all kinds of things. And I was dressed in disguise, wig and all, and pretended that I was an alien teacher, and they had to complete certain tasks in order to have their teacher return for the day. So again, everything was full of rigor, lots of content, and the kids absolutely loved it, and they just can't wait for what's going to happen next.
I'm Brandy Powell. I teach first grade at CPS, and the Ron Clark experience, it's just changed me. It's inspired me. I'm coming to school every day, and I'm not dragging in like, "Oh, my gosh, where's my coffee?" I come in, and my kids are like, "Ms. Powell, you can't be sad. You've got to get up, you've got to move." So I've just been so excited, and so my kids are excited. And that's my biggest takeaway, is I look at my kids' faces, and they're smiling, and they're like, "What is she going to teach me?" I've created a sense of urgency, which was a big deal. I teach my kids, "We have all this stuff to learn, and we have this much time to do it. You've got to move fast. You don't have time to have all this downtime. We'll play at recess, and you could talk at lunch, but we have things to do." And they've taken ownership of their education, and they want to learn, and that's amazing to me to see. So in this activity in particular, I said, "All right." I've taught them how to add three numbers, and I've also taught them to find a missing add-in, but I taught it earlier in the year, and I wanted to make sure they still had it because it was such an important skill. So what I did is I took this sheet that had 50 problems on each side. One skill was on one side, one skill was on the other. I said, "They're not going to sit here and do 10 problems." I cut it into strips and put it in balloons, blew the balloons up, and threw 22 balloons around my classroom. So when they come in, I'm like, "Guys, they're going to take a math quiz." They're like, "Oh." I'm like, "No, it's a pop quiz. It's in a balloon." "Oh, we're going to take a pop quiz," you know? So I was very specific with the expectations. I didn't want anybody getting hurt, so they had to go get their balloon, come back to their seat, pop it, and then answer the quiz. It was four questions on each side. It took them 10 minutes, but it was a very valuable piece of data that I could use to guide my instruction, and that's what I really took away from, because you don't need to break your back to do these things. That was simple. I had colleagues that helped me. It was simple. I did it in 20 minutes, they did it in 10 minutes, and perfect. So another activity that we did, this is Hungry Hippos also, but I was a little scared to do it in my classroom because I have so many desks, and we have a lot of kids this year, so I was like, "Okay, well, maybe I'll talk to the PE teacher, and she'll help me out." So we decided to do it in the gym for their PE block, and instead of doing ELA, what we did is we took it and we adapted it to math. It can be adapted throughout the curriculum, different subjects, different grade levels. And what we did is we took two-digit numbers, and when they pulled out one of the different colored balls, they either had to add 10 more. One ball would be take away 10, add one more, take away one, so it was just a review of that math skill. And they really enjoyed it, and when we got back to class, they said, "Ms. Powell, we were learning, huh? Yeah, you were learning." And so the students' reaction to the changes in my classroom have been the biggest takeaway for me as a teacher.
My name is Jennifer Snead, and I'm a second-grade teacher, and just like Lynn and Brandy have said, it's made such a difference for me and for my students in the classroom. They come in every day, excited and eager to learn. They want to know what's going to happen next, they want to continue to learn. And what you see in those pictures are, we were learning about natural resources in the classroom, and we were working on renewable and nonrenewable. And we also had a space alien come into our classroom, and this space alien asked the students if they would please share one of their natural resources, and gave them an option of either sharing coal or wind power. And so the students had to, there was an activity with beans, and they had to hunt out the beans in the classroom, and one represented wind and one represented coal. And then they had to work in cooperative groups, and they had to come up with a decision of, are they going to share the wind or the coal, and then explain why they chose that. We had, in the picture, you can see we had Greenville Utilities donate hats, so there are ways that you could do this without even having to go to the Dollar General. You could get donations. We had just some wonderful response from them in helping out on this. One of the things, the most important thing that I took away from this is learning that you could be clever and motivating at the same time. The students, they get excited when you're up there, and you're on stage, and you're being silly and motivating, but they, you raise that bar so high, and you increase that rigor, so you're teaching to the highest of the students, the highest academic, where the students who are struggling or are the average student, they also increase their learning, because they realize that it's not that they can't do, they want to do, and therefore, they can do. And so those students who, if you just gave them a worksheet or were up there lecturing, they're not going to listen, they're not going to participate, because it's something they think they can't do. But when you're doing these kinds of activities, they want to participate, and therefore, they can do it.
Those are some kids that just, they were going to tell about, and Lisa has this, so if you can send it to them, they may have it, so you can watch the videos and the students, but for time, because I know you have a lot of agenda, we're going to skip it. But how's this looking in the future for us? What are we planning to do? Well, as you know, our student support teams are now going to be MTSS, they're multi-tiered systems paired with PBIS. In Chalkwinnity, we don't have a PBIS team. We don't have a behavior plan at our school where everyone follows the same thing. So after we went to Ron Clark's school, he uses the four houses like in Harry Potter, and the kids don't know what house they're in until they come in and they spin a wheel. So we all might be in kindergarten, but we're each going to spin a wheel, decide what house we're in, and that's our big planning thing. We've got to decide if we're doing houses, if we're doing tribes. We don't know. We've got a lot of work to do this summer. He has a book, 55 Essentials. I don't know if you've read it, but it's a great book, easy read, you can read it in one sitting. I mean, it's simple, and we have to create our essentials. Well, we may take some from his, but they have to fit us and what we need to do, so that's something else we're working on. And I said devising the plan for the four houses, because it creates, you know how your classroom has a community? We're trying to create this community and this culture for the entire school. And I think when you visit Chalkwinnity Primary, and some of you have, some of you haven't, but when you walk in, you feel a welcoming culture at our school. I mean, I know the kids when I'm walking down the hallway. Mr. Pike knows the kids. A car rider, I know the cars. I mean, Ms. Dale's a librarian, she knows them. She knows their families, and helps that we're a K4, pre-K through 4. We have time to build rapport with them, so we want that culture to extend out. So that means that I might have Kinder, first, second, third, and fourth graders all in that same house, and they're going to cheer each other on as a camaraderie. And then we're going to, a big thing was making your classroom your space. And so we are going to personalize our classrooms, and we are partnering with outside agencies. Ms. Whittington was able to talk with the Honors College and the art folks over at ECU, and we have a meeting set tomorrow, and they're going to come, and we're going to talk about murals that we'll be painting on our walls. Stages, like standing up on the stages, we have stages, or actually, they were our music risers, but they go flat, and they work perfectly, and so it's just an amazing experience, and I hope that you guys will come. You know, the invitation's there, you just don't have to have an appointment. Anytime, you can stop by. I will tour you around that school, or you can just walk on your own, and you can see all the great things that are going on. Andres Penn, she went with us, lots of maintenance guys. Every time they come, I'm like, "Let me come show you this." And so you can ask anybody on maintenance, and they'll probably tell you some of the things. I've seen Paul Huggins has come and seen a lot of the things we're doing. The next slide. Mr. Williams has come. He was a part of our alien invasion. So how can we help more teachers get this experience? We're doing this. My teachers, I mean, you can see it and hear it in their voices. We have several more that came, that went to Ron Clark. Tamika in pre-K, they had a...
What kind of storm?
A rainstorm last week. It was Friday, and they had on raincoats. She had storm music playing in the background, you know, on her smartboard. They had umbrellas, and they were doing rhyming words and making a large amount. It's just a literacy-rich environment, but you're making it fun. You're putting magic in it, and we've got to, because talking about the test, I mean, it's breaking down our teachers, and we don't need to lose good teachers. I can't lose the teachers I have, because I think they're just the best. We partnered with PTO and Ron. Ron has given me 15 free spots. So when we went February, five folks went for free. The rest of our staff is going in May. I'm sending 28 people to Ron Clark in May. Our PTO's did $10,000, and Ron has given me 10 free scholarships. All you got to do is ask him. He is, I mean, he's vested in this community. He will send. I would love for our middle schools to go. We're trying to partner with Ken Gibbs at Chalkwinn Middle. We're going to work together. She's on board. So with our kids, the way we had PBIS set up, it's not such a hard transition when they go to fifth grade over at the middle school. So we're having great vertical conversations about how we can help these kids, because they're what's important. And those are just some other notes we can make. Do you have any questions? Oh, Instagram, yeah. We have an Instagram page. Do any of y'all have Instagram? I know you have smartphones. I know Mr. Bilbo has Instagram. Is anybody else that has Instagram? So go to Chalkwinnity Primary, because I know our time's out, we're getting kicked out.
No, I wasn't kicking out. I said I have Instagram.
Oh, okay. You know, I'm usually sending them answers, too. But go to your Instagram page and follow us. It is a private page, so we do have to approve you. The only people we follow back are our teachers, so we can tag them in the pictures, but we're posting tons of stuff daily. In fact, I've got to share this, and I know Dr. Fitz wants me to shut up. I am, I'm getting ready, guys.
You didn't say anything, did you?
But last week, our school nurse sent out, there was something on social media called "Best School Day Ever," and it was late. She sent me this at 9:30. So I sent an email out to the staff, and I said, "Whatever you're doing, take a picture, send it to us," and so we can hashtag it. And it was something related to Donors Choose. Any of you heard about it? While I was out that day, because my mother had some medical things going on, I was just getting, my phone was getting blown up with things, and I said, "You know, this isn't for show. We are doing great things every day. You should have seen the things. You need to go to our Instagram page and look at what these teachers sent for 'Best Day Ever.'" It was amazing, just the activities. They were building houses out of different materials. Was that second grade? It was first grade, for the three little pigs. You know how they look like their houses? There it is. Amazing stuff, so I hope you'll do that, okay? And we just hope y'all will talk about this and encourage others in our county to go.
Thank you for sharing, and I've been around Ron a little bit, and Ron's a little different. No, Ron's a lot different, but anything that's going to inspire teachers, which will in turn inspire the students, I'm all for it, and hopefully, it'll catch on, and some other schools and people will do that. For the board, just in case, if you don't know, on a personal note, Lynn happens to be my alien daughter, and truly, she was alien way before that, and Heather is my other daughter, she's my non-alien daughter. So they were both involved with it, so I've heard an awful, awful, awful lot about this.
I'm like, "10 o'clock at night, I'm like, 'Hey, I need to do this,'" and I hush her, "How can I do this?" So he's on board.
But what is my answer usually, Lynn? You better run that by Don and the board. Not getting my approval. Thank you for coming.
We can be proud of Ron. He was in the first graduating class at Northside High School.
And taught here in the school system. Absolutely.
He was, wouldn't predict it this much from him, but he's done a great job.
We have a lot to cover in a short time to get there. Policy updates, Dr. Fitz.
This is our first exposure to this round of policy updates, and what we've given you are four files that you can link on PDF files here that are legal references, if you want to take a look at those. There are tables and charts and grids like we've had in the past that give you the updated policy number, the title of the policy, description of the update in terms of what's been done, any legal authority that's involved in notes, and we'd like just to give you an opportunity to take a month or so to look at these, and we'll bring them back and go through item by item and give you any other salient information that you need when we meet next month. So this is not for action tonight, but for your beginning process of taking a look at these new policies. Most of them are required updates based on some things that have come through the School Board Association.
And I see you have it titled Minor Update, Minor Revision, Substantial Update. Everybody take the next month to look over them. I'm sure you would love reading all that. Don, you're still up on grants.
Two grants. I'm just going to try to be brief on these. The first one is that we're requesting $63,790 from the U.S. Department of Agriculture for a distance learning and telemedicine program to replace our, and upgrade our 10-year-old distance learning equipment that we have in classrooms at Northside, Southside, and Washington, and this allows us to do some broadcasting from school location to school location. This equipment is used to receive classes broadcast from the Beaufort Community College via interactive video conferencing. Beaufort County Schools received a similar grant 10 years ago, and high school students have earned an estimated 3,200 college credits via distance learning since 2006. College credits earned through this system are tuition-free, funded by the state through its Career and College Promise Program, and what we're trying to do is just keep our technology updated. The Community College recently updated their equipment, and we want to make sure that we're consistent and that we can move forward for 10 more years. And the second is the Beaufort County Schools is requesting $5,000 from Biogen Foundation of North Carolina. This is Ignite the Power of STEM for the Early College High School, and this grant will provide microscopes for science classrooms at the Early College High School.
And no actions required, so that's just why I'll call it. Okay, that moves us into the action portion, and first up, there's a summer remediation plan, and Ms. Lynn is already headed toward the podium, I see, so I guess she's handling that.
Good evening. Tonight, I'd like to ask for approval of our summer program that we have set up for Beaufort County Schools. This program allows students who are failing a course and need credit recovery, or if they pass the course, but made it one or two on the EOC or EOG, they could come back into a remediation session, and we could test them again prior to the end of June, which means that it would count for proficiency for us this year, this school year. It would not count for growth or teacher effectiveness, okay? Those schools that would like to participate are Early College High School, SW Snowden, Washington High School, Chalkwinnity Primary, Ed Tech Center, and John Small. This consists of a remediation day and testing days, and for the most part, they're all, as you can see in the attachment, they're all basically during the workdays, after school gets out, is remediation time, and then as well as the testing. There's no transportation. We do not have to provide transportation. It's whoever wants to come, it's strictly voluntary.
I see it says transportation provided by parents.
Right.
Okay. Anyone have any questions about this? I think it's fairly straightforward.
I've got one question for Dr. Fitz.
Yes, sir.
Are we, financially, do we have the money to cover this expense in the budget?
There's no expense to us, because these are on workdays when teachers are there already, and we're not providing transportation.
Okay, well, that's even better. I'll make a motion that we do it. I like it.
We have a motion in a second. Any other questions about it?
Yes.
Okay, here are no questions. All in favor, say aye. And you oppose? Okay, it's approved.
All right, thank you.[1735.83]
Good point, Matt. No more. I agree.
Bill Boeys running the ball.
Okay, that's gonna carry us to capital budget, and Don, it looks like you might be handling this as well.
You all have seen this. We've had various iterations as we've gone through with dollar figures and moving things in, moving things out. Last meeting, we decided what we felt like were the priorities, and this is upon the request, too, of the commissioners. We've tried to put things together in terms of capital needs for '16, '17, which will be next year, and then a two- to five-year, and then a six-to-10. And obviously, six-to-10 is hard to prepare because you really don't know what's gonna happen that far out in some cases. In addition, there's been some discussion about modular replacements. Those are shown on the bottom but not included in the budget request that we have here. But we do have brick-and-mortar replacement versus metal buildings, and then also what might be done under some other types of programs with some of the bigger dollar items, building envelope and whatnot, that we're exploring. But this is what we've discussed. The final total on the local side would be $1,837,643. That will be the request for the upcoming year. And we've put a price tag of our projects that are on the list of just over $5 million. And we've got that spread out over the course of the two-to-10-year period beyond what we're requesting for next year. This would be what we would take with us to the joint meeting with the commissioners on the capital side. So I guess if you handle however you want, but if we're ready for approval, we can put this one behind us and start working on our local budget.
You know, the other night, we were saying the formulas didn't come through, but I actually checked all the numbers, and Lisa, great job, or all the numbers add up? Don, whoever she's pointing at you. But I noticed everything added up the proper way when I went through it today. I do have, not a question, I just have a couple of recommendations. But first, I'll give the board. Anybody have anything they'd like to say about this? Because I'm good with the numbers on here, but I want to make sure everybody else is.
The only thing I wanted to add was, as we speak, there's a lot of legislation that is still going on in Raleigh about sales tax. And effective March 1st, service-oriented jobs will now have to charge sales tax on that service. So most of these bids obviously came into Stan and Russ prior to March 1st. So I think we have to take into consideration that most, all of those bids that involve any kind of service that's not within the maintenance department will now have an added sales tax increase. Doesn't matter when you did the proposal. At first, some, it was very exclusive to certain types of service. And just this morning, I got an update that said they've gone back to the table, and now they're trying to heap on as many services as possible. I guess they're worried they may miss a penny here or there. So there won't be many labor forces that will not include sales tax now. So I just wanted to put that out there. That will be an added expense. That will be out of our control. And so as we proceed with doing these jobs, we're gonna have to bear in mind that whatever was bid will now be higher.
We just have to stay in these budgets, for sure. But I know what you're saying.
It's really gonna affect your larger jobs more than anything, but just in the business I'm in, from job to job, it sometimes affects one job $400 to $800. And that's a lot if it's a large job. That's all.
Well, depending on how you look at it, tax on $2 million is quite a bit.
Yes, it certainly is.
Could I get you to pull to the last page where the modular units are at on your screen? I just went, you know, we talked about how to present this. Do you have any thoughts about that, first off? Because here's what I was looking at. We have Chacooney, and they're in no certain order. You have CPS, Eastern, Taylor, and Washington. And I'm not talking about the last item, that auxiliary gym. I see it's already been moved over. We, well, I had heard. I had heard someone say in a meeting earlier that when we get around to this, Washington probably should be the first one we look at. I want to kind of get an agreement from everybody, Don, before we go to start looking at presenting this. In what kind of order are we talking about? Because personally, I'd like to see whichever one that we think is the top one added to the capital list for this coming year. I don't want this, I'd prefer, except to the board, I do not prefer for this to be presented to the commissioners on a two-to-five-year plan. I want us to put down what we think needs to be done now, next year, the year after that, and the year after that. And then they can address it how they'd like to address it. Meaning, if this board decides here in the next minute or two that Washington High School should be the first unit that we look at replacing, and I'm looking strictly at the modular metals, not the brick-and-mortar, then I would like to see that item moved into the 2016-'17 column and let them go ahead and address it. Personally, I would like, and I'm just throwing ideas out, and everybody's willing to shoot it down or give your own. I would like Chacooney Primary as the second step and the reason for that, because we're talking about, not that their modules are probably any worse than anybody else's, but we're talking about by putting those on campus, we could bring fifth grade out of CMS and bring it back to the elementary campus where it belongs, plus that would alleviate the issue of any overcrowding at CMS. So we'd be able to knock out two birds with one stone. Then when you move into the 2018, and I'm gonna call it 2019, '20, I personally don't know which, maybe Stan, he's here, that would leave JC, Taylor, and Eastern. Does any, John Cotton Taylor, yeah. Does anybody have a preference? Which one of those is, would be next in line as the worst one that we have? Does anybody have an idea?
They're all bad.
They're all bad. I understand they're all bad. But if we're gonna do it, if we're gonna do it a step at a time for the commissioners, which is what they'd like to see, then we're gonna have to decide which one would be.
I would say that because that's a few years down the road, that you can, they're interchangeable and between now and then, give us the flexibility because maybe one has suffered a lot of damage in a storm or just some wear and tear you weren't expecting, that might flip-flop those.
I agree. I just, but for right now, I would like to see, yeah, I'd like to see one listed this year, one listed for the next year, which would require you, Don, to come up with a little bit different formula here. But first off, let's do the easy part. Does anybody have a problem with moving Washington High? Does everybody agree that Washington High School is where we should look at first?
Yes.
Because I definitely think that's where we should look at first. What do you think?
I think that was the consensus the other night.
It was. That's what I heard. That was why I brought it up. Does anybody have a problem with moving that 1.9 over to the 2016-'17 year?
No.
Don? You're quiet there. I want to make sure, because it's easy for me to say, but you to present. Okay, then that's what I'd like to see. I'd like to see those figures moved into the 2016-'17 year. Does anybody have an issue with current? And Carol, you're right, things can change, but looking after, we can come to some consensus on that with the commissioners, to look at CPS next so we can try to alleviate moving that fifth grade class? Okay, so can you then list that one as a second one? And you're right, again, we can interchange the last two, three years out, but at this point, put John Cotton Taylor ahead of Eastern, Eastern ahead of-
Is that what Stan thinks? Saying you think John Cotton Taylor-
That's what I thought he was telling us. Okay, so let's go with Washington, CPS, JCT, and Eastern. But move that into this year, which is gonna change the capital substantially. But that way, we've done our due diligence. Now the commissioners can address it however they, you know, wish. And that, we'll at least bring it to the forefront for discussion. And I'm good with leaving the auxiliary gym six to 10 years out for right now. Is there anything else anybody needs to change about this? Okay. Then I'll enter-
I'll make a motion we approve the budget as presented and as you recommended the changes.
Okay, I have a motion to second. Last time, or forever hold your peace? No questions? Okay, all in favor? Just raise our hand. Everybody in favor, raise your hand. Can you oppose? I guess not, nobody left. Okay, it's approved. So we have what we're gonna carry to the commissioners on capital, and I guess that's gonna now turn our focus to-
I want to say something real quick. I want to acknowledge Dr. Phillips and his staff for the time it takes to put this together. It's a copious amount of work, and even the board, the time they have to do. But Dr. Phillips, and please, for your staff that's not here, give us, give them our thanks for the time it takes to put this. A lot of work that I think the public really doesn't see.
And having experienced this for a few more years than previous years, it went really well this year. It was smooth and prosperous.
It goes well for a reason, I think, when we have folks to put the stuff together.
It was, it was easy almost. Now, in the future, next month, we'll start moving into the local expense, which is probably, we might put more of that on Ms. Harold over there. That might be her forte.
I think we owe Lisa some flowers or a day off or something.
How about both? Okay. So having said that, that carries us into another capital update, and I think Stan, you might be up on this one.
Lisa, you did an update, board docs? Okay. We had several updates in mind. Washington High School Field House, the project is, we have received our certificate of occupancy from the City of Washington. We have our final building inspection tomorrow at 1:00. Mr. John McGahay, the project architect, will be attending. During this time, we'll be creating a final punch list for the contractors. And any of y'all want to come out and walk through, you're welcome. It's our final time, but anybody wants to come as well. PS Jones Concession Stand, we've given the CO for it, and I think they've actually have been using it. Washington Building Inspection's a minor punch list, and we hope to have it finished by this week. Plan operations, we still have the final grading. We've got most of it done. We've got a little raking to do. And we still, I think, still have the grass seed. I don't know if they got that out today or not. They were, had the seed, but this was written last week. Eastern Elementary Multipurpose Building, electrical service has been ran. City of Washington, electrical contractors and plumber contractors done a roughing in the building. All the framework is up, and I'd say probably 85% of the exterior structure was up at 5:00 the last time I went over there. Really coming along. They should have it fully enclosed tomorrow, other than the door front, so. Eastern Elementary Pod 2 Bathroom, AAA Glasses completed their installation of the storefront, less, some minor painting they have to do, and some flashing. Plan operations, we've removed all our fixtures, and we worked with the custodial staff at the school, had the bathrooms cleaned, and we have most of the fixtures back in. I think we have two sinks in the girls that will be finished tomorrow, so the girls' bathroom will be back in operation tomorrow, and we hope by Friday we'll have the boys done. As long as we don't have a major breakdown in the rest of the school system, so. Any questions about the projects in progress?
So you plan on those two bathrooms being up and running?
Yes, ma'am. We didn't have the-
What's been the holdup?
We hadn't got all the stuff towards the faucets, so we ordered some standard faucets and put in that we'll use later, but we had gotten the ones with the eyes, so the kids wouldn't have to reach and get them, and it would control our water usage and everything else and not worry about leaving them cut on. And they're still on back order, so we went on and put the standard faucets in for now, and then we'll come back later and change them as we get them in. We still hadn't received those. And we're waiting on a couple of the tailpieces for the boys' toilets, and they're supposed to be in tomorrow. The toilets have been set and everything, so that's what we're waiting on there.
Where do we stand on the sides? The pieces that we were gonna talk to MHA about? I call it the rest of the enclosure. I call it the sides.
You want me to hit on that? Dr. Phillips or-
Are you gonna cover that somewhere else?
No, we have, MHA was on site already because they're doing the multipurpose room, and we asked them to come over and take a look at it. And we say architects, but architects are made up of engineers as well, so we knew we could get feedback from them. And they've communicated in a document with Stan what we feel like the cost is. And I don't have the numbers here in front of me. We feel like with the money that was given by the commissioners, even including the design fees that will be involved, that we can get the project done. And my goal will be to have this finished before this fiscal year is finished. But at that point, we're not having to talk about plumbing. We're just looking at the side, the structure.
There's a lot of things that has to go on before we can do the physical walls. The storm drain's not adequate, the overflow sculpers, the concrete is not substantial. There's quite a few structural cracks in it. And then the storm drain would have to go out between the back of Pod 2 and the modular unit, a new storm drain, to get rid of all that roof water that drops in that pod. So during that time, we could do some of our '16-'17 capital projects, y'all have approved, put the handicap ramps in and some other things that could go inside together, but it would definitely have to be done when the students is not on campus.
Okay. Ms. Harold, I'm gonna bring you into this conversation. How much money have we spent on this Eastern Bathroom project? As the best that you can explain to us? Because I know it's still underway, so there might be POs, you know, floating back and forth right now.
You have three different pieces going on.
Right, that's what I said. That's what I said. And plus, I'm not even sure she's seen everything yet that's been done, because it's ongoing right now.
You have two separate lines specifically for bathrooms. You have one that had a $20,000 budget. Of that, approximately $6,502 has been incurred. The other one, it's $62,000 within the budget. We have a purchase order for AAA Glass for $20,000. I think it was $20,120. Then we have a third amount, $14,985, if you want, that's from the non-mart HAC. Is that correct? So what we've got incurred right now is approximately $42,000.
Okay. I mean, okay, because there's so much discussion that can go on about this. I know when we had the capital last year, that's exactly what we put down. I don't wanna get too deep into it now, but you know where I'm headed, right? But the commissioners have a completely different figure in their head that they gave us. And that's the one that I'm working against every time I get a call from a commissioner and he wants to walk on the project. He doesn't care what I thought it was. He cares what they thought it was. How are we going to address that?
Well, we set aside projects in terms of making sure that we have the $300,000 there. And I want to encourage us to get this done. And not, I mean, go ahead and, whatever needs to be done, we need to put a priority item list together in terms of what we can do, when it can be done, and then have a timeline that we stick to so that the commissioners know if we say at a certain time we know that they're there, it's gonna be finished. But with the goal being that we have this done before the budget year is over.
Yeah, the projects that you put on hold more than total, which is the $300,000 that the county-
Say that again.
You've put some projects on hold to come up to the $300,000 that the county commissioners were expecting, and they make up at least that amount to be able to cover it.
Because this project shouldn't come within a mile of $300,000. I mean, I know you got a lot of work ahead of you, but I still can't see that.
It's gonna be in the 250 range. Well, the concrete and the stormwater is gonna, I estimate it in the 2 to 250 range.
Have you got the price right now?
I don't have it with me. We have it. We have an estimated breakdown from MHA Works on Architectural and then all the designs and engineering fees. Everything's in their estimate for the project. But we would have to retain them to get them to proceed further, so that's something I'm gonna have to present to you next meeting.
Okay. I mean, I hear all this, but here, I mean, you know, I do in realities. And here's the reality. The reality is, a year ago in May, May the 7th and 15th, I had a meeting with the commissioners. We all did. And you're gonna be having another one the first part of May again. And the reality is, I don't need to go into that meeting with this project not done, because I can tell you, if so, I'm dragging a lot of people in that meeting with me, because that is not gonna go well at all. I mean, I see people looking at me. Do y'all understand what I'm saying here?
There's no way you'll have that project done.
That's what I'm hearing.
I mean, you wouldn't even be starting.
That's what I'm hearing.
The scope of the project's a lot more than what anybody thinks. And I think that's what Stan's been trying to say. There's a lot of civil, structural, and other items got to be taken care of that nobody thought needed to be done. I mean, everybody just thought you could go in there and close it in. I mean-
I understand. I understand all of those issues.
Lot more than we got to be done just throwing money at it.
I understand that. But the reality part is, when I hear, when I walk in with a commissioner, they approved they approved it in August of last year. So they don't care that there's a lot to be done. That's all I'm saying. I'm just, I'm not disagreeing with anybody. I'm just telling you what facts are.
But the only thing we can...
We just have to do the best we can at this point, right?
That's why we're getting ready to say the only thing we can do is just lay it all on the table, just say, listen, we got into it, it's wound up being way more than we thought. We're trying our best to get it done as fast as we can, and that's all we can do, and...
Maybe by that time, we can have a timeline from them of what we will do, that that school's out right on, but...
At the very least, we have to go into that with a real plan.
But the last thing we need to be doing is sugarcoating this to those people. We don't lay it on the line, just say what we wound up, we wound up way more than we thought we were going to get into, and just tell it like it is.
Trust me, I have walked that now with different commissioners, three, four, five times. There's no sugarcoating.
No, 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 no.
There's no sugarcoating. I think they're going to seek to that. Okay, well, just try to give us some hard dates that I can tell them. I mean, I think, I was out there this week again, I think, Don, you were out there with one this week. It's a regular occurrence, and I don't have, I don't need to be telling them, I think I know this, or I think I know that. I need to know what the dates are, okay?
I think the next piece of action is going to have to be the design work by some architect.
We're going to have to hire an architect for seeing any further. So that's what we're going to have to present next meeting, but to y'all.
Okay.
And we did have, I think the record should show, and the public, I want them to be aware, Stan had the engineers from DPI come out, and they've done all that they can do, and basically said we need to turn it over and get that feedback from an architect, so that's why we're at that point now.
Any other questions, rep?
Not about that. Completed. Building four roof installation here on this campus was completed by Curtis Construction of Kinston with no change orders. It was budgeted ninety thousand dollars. The project came in at twenty-nine thousand two hundred. Chalkwood New Middle School Softball Project has been completed by Clark and Son. It was budgeted five thousand. The project came in at three thousand four hundred and thirteen dollars and eighty-seven cents. Washington High School Window Project's been completed by AAA Glass. It was budgeted twenty-one thousand, and the project came in with no change orders at eight thousand eight hundred and fifteen eighty-seven. Any question about those?
Does anybody have any questions about any of those three?
Nope.
No. Okay. What's next?
Action.
Oh, the action item.
I'd like to request five thousand dollars to complete the site work for the, that was not in the general contractor's project at the Washington School, at the Washington High School Fieldhouse and the P.S. Jones Concession Stand projects, and that was excluding any site work. That's the way we bid it, so the City of Washington would like us to do some improvements, and that's what I'm asking for, is money, like pouring concrete to connect the fieldhouse to the track, down, concrete pads under the downspouts, shrubbery, grass seeding, and some rock for drives at both the schools that need some improvement there to the athletic facility. And that's where I have a breakdown of the actual monies and what we estimated the project would cost, and that was five yards of concrete to connect the fieldhouse and finishing a thousand dollars. Two loads of fifty-seven stone at Washington Wagner Stadium in the wooded area, a thousand dollars. Sixteen concrete downspouts for erosion, concrete pads, a hundred and sixty, a load of crush and run for the fire lane and the out to the athletic field at P.S.J. Fence repair around a tennis court and a football field needs some minor fence repair that's gone neglected there, and some of it was due to construction, so I think a couple trucks hit the fence there. Eighty bags of brick chips for the flower beds that would be created, forty plants would be distributed between Washington High School Fieldhouse and the P.S.J., two rolls of fabric, and fifty landscape border blocks. That brings it to forty-five hundred dollars in our total, and just want a little cushion in case we've been over.
Okay. Here, I mean, go to the second one right quick, because on that one, since we're under our budget, what we have for it anyway, we even need to do that?
Was what y'all approved previous, Mr. Terry? Was the...
Did we change from the, I mean, I understand...
Yes, sir. The original mount, the original contract that was approved was...
Yeah, I don't, I mean, but I don't think we actually changed anything, Lynn, I mean...
I'm asking for additional funds to change the doors, so...
Well, I mean, I understand that. I don't think we changed the doors, but what I'm saying is, the project was approved at twenty thousand, sixty-two thousand. You just reported that we're not there yet, so I don't need to approve a seventeen hundred and forty dollar budget item if we're still with under what we've got to spend.
That's correct.
Right, yeah, I don't need to evolve that, so just go ahead and change those.
Well, I make a motion, we accept item one then. I'm going to spend some money here.
Yeah, I figured you would.
Stan, you know, we've got a sixty-one thousand dollar cushion from the roof. How in the world did we budget ninety thousand dollars and something cost twenty-nine thousand two hundred, Stan?
Well, they were looking at replacing the roof, and then this company, and, well, actually, Mr. John Tucker, gave us the idea of using the existing metal roof, filling over the skylights, putting a piece of wood strip down the edge, new boxing, and then filling the current corrugated metal roof that was on there with foam to get our energy rating and compliance, and then put the roof on it. It was a whole lot cheaper roof than taking the whole roof off and putting one back on.
So we did actually end up doing what we budgeted we were paying.
Yes, we originally were going to place the whole roof on the building, and then Mr. Tucker suggested that with DPI and give us some other ideas.
Yeah, I'm not arguing that. I just think...
And they got a nice roof, and they were a very, very good company to work with.
Well, I think that's important. I think it's, you know, as we work with commissioners and the public, there should be integrity in what we're doing, and I don't want anybody to think that we're, you know, you pad it and then you come in cheaper, and I think when we find a better way that's cheaper, but it's a good way to do it, we certainly want to look at that, but I think we need to explain when those numbers are different. But even on the window project, when we budgeted twenty-one five and it came in at eighty-eight, what happened there?
Just the difference in pricing glass and competitive deal with a local guy that got involved in it, and we definitely have a bunch more windows to replace at that school, Mr. Terry.
Well, Stan, when this happens, is it difficult for you to include the definition there, the reason why that was such a big change?
No, ma'am. I believe it.
Anything that'd give us more ammunition to tell...
If you could do that, that might would give us a better understanding of what's going on.
But I also think, you know, if we...
It's a wonderful thing.
But if we said we've got ninety thousand for this project, so let's spend ninety thousand on the project, we're not being good stewards of taxpayer money, if there's a better way to, or an easier way, cheaper way that's still effective, I think it's wise for us to do that, but I think we need to explain why that happened and it's done.
Absolutely, and I'm all in favor of that, because when you say spend taxpayers' money, they're on that side of the desk and they're on this side of the desk, so it's out of my pocket, too. So the cheapest way, cheaper if it works, is fine with me. I do have a question, Matt, don't mean to jump over you. I heard you say you were going to spend that money. I'll let you in just a minute.
Well, since we're saving so much money, let's spend this money. Since we've got so much tied up in this project, let's do the tidying up and look at, make it look how we decent.
I see Ms. Harold looking at me, so she knows the question I probably have. Where, we had four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to spend on the fieldhouse project that's been approved. Where do I stand on that? Because I see a picture here, it looks like the fieldhouse is pretty much completed.
We have the payment application that actually came in yesterday or today, I remember the second of which, there was, I believe, fifty thousand dollars left to be paid out of that contract. I don't believe we've paid the other three, there was additional three thousand for tariff fund, and I don't believe we've paid that. We may have, but I don't, but for the major contract, we've paid, I believe, but fifty thousand with the last payment application that we have.
Am I hearing all of that financial...
We're still in budget. We were in our budget.
Right, that's what, yeah. So am I hearing what you're saying is, we've paid all the bills and we have fifty thousand, but there's still more bills, or there are no more bills?
Well, there's a punch list.
I hear, I hear a saying, the punch, but we don't know where to be on that.
Right now, there's the fifty thousand dollars to pay in the contract.
Right, that's what you're saying. I hear that. Okay. So the same thing, I'm going to say the same thing here that I said here. I don't need to approve an additional five thousand dollars as long as I'm still under that budget.
You're not under the budget.
Oh, not, well, I haven't spent the money, all of it, yet, right?
You have, your budget's four hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars that you've approved. You have a contract with the construction company for four hundred and seventy-one thousand, and you have an additional contract with tariff fund, forty thousand dollars. We still owe the major contractor the fifty thousand dollars.
Okay, it's incurred, I got you. That's, if I had a hurt incurred, I'd have got it. Okay, that's fine, so Matt, I'll...
My second is...
Because if the money's here, it's just a matter of repurposing the money is what we're doing. So I hear a motion in a second on the five thousand to finish the project. Any other questions other than what I keep having? If not, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? And I lost a board member in that discussion, too. Okay, it's approved. I guess he didn't want to hear that. Anything else, Stan?
No, sir.
All right, appreciate it.
While Stan's giving building updates, the Northside Baseball Softball Concession Stand Crest Box is ninety-nine point nine percent complete. They got a little bit of siding left to do, but having those bathrooms there at the baseball and softball field has been a great addition, so that job's almost done.
Okay. Board policy, Don? We've already seen this happen.
Well, this is a policy that we need to rescind, and it was Catherine Sheehan who goes through the policies that the School Board Association brought up to the attention that this was something, it was a federal mandate that was in place that is no longer there, and we still had it in our policy manual, excuse me, so we're not making changes, we're just taking this out because we don't offer school improvement choice transfers anymore.
Okay, so this is one, instead of approvals, we can do away with.
Move approval, second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any questions, Don, about that, other than what you just said? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed to that? Okay, thank you very much, Don, and I believe you have a couple of field trips.
I have three field trips for you, but two of them actually together, there are four total, actually five, but we've got a couple combined. Northside High School, it's field trip eighty-three ninety-one and eighty-three ninety-three. Involves the Air Force Junior ROTC Leadership Group, officers will be going a little bit earlier than the rest of the group that'll be going. You see two different dates there that would involve a minivan and then the bus. This is a trip they normally take. You may have a question about the one male when we've got two males and one female students attending, but you remember, this is one where we get to the site, and then there are female chaperones at our own time. The second in that list there is eighty-three thirty-eight Southside High School in April. It's a skills club going to Greensboro, North Carolina for the state conference, taking an activity bus, and then Bath and Northeast will be going together to Yorktown, Virginia for a band competition, taking a charter bus. I'd like to seek your approval on those.
And they got more than enough adults to cover the chaperones, it looks like, so... Okay, got a motion in a second. Any questions? Hear any? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, Don, thank you. And that's going to carry us to a closed session for personnel issues.
I move that we go into closed session pursuant to General Statute one-four-three-dash-three-one-eight-don-elevena-one to prevent disclosure of confidential personnel files under General Statute one-one-five-c-dash-three-twenty-one and student records under General Statute one-one-five-c-dash-four-oh-two-and-twenty, U.S. Code twelve thirty-two G.
Wow. Have a motion in a second. I didn't know we had that much closed session to talk about. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? And we're in a closed session, folks. Okay, group, we're out of closed session, back in open session, I guess you'd call it, and first item up is to approve the personnel agenda that was just discussed.
I move, Mr. Chair, second.
Chairman, I'm going to recuse myself from the vote.
I wonder why, okay? So we have a motion in a second to approve the personnel agenda minus Mr. Bill Bro. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, that's approved, Don. You can tell Mark, I guess. April calendar, folks, if you pull that up and take a quick look at it, should be a couple of dates on there, I guess.
Yeah, the fifth and the nineteenth. The fifth is the work session, the nineteenth is a regular board meeting. Note the times, work session's five o'clock, the regular board meeting is five-thirty.
Is it still working for you, Matt?
Yep.
Okay.
Everybody's fine.
We need to plug in two or three dates to go ahead and start working on the local budget, and I've left a message with Brian Alleygood to get an idea of when we're going to need to have our meeting with, joint meeting with the commissioners, so I'll be getting back with you on that.
So you're going to give us the dates, that's what you're saying, you're going to get back with us?
Well, I was going to ask you to look at a couple of dates and see what would work for you.
Okay, give us the date.
I know Matt can't do this, but Monday, the twenty-first, next week, would be a chance to launch into the discussion. We won't, we certainly aren't going to be deciding anything. We still have some numbers Lynn and I have to work out, but we could put together and give you what we've got to let you think about it, then the next week, we're out for Easter, and then we can try to look at a date or two.
What time you want to...
It's going to be March.
Which will be Monday.
Because that's before the Easter breaks, if we don't do it, it's going to put us three weeks off.
Ms. Booth does not have something that day.
Well, let's please write it down.
That's the only day that looks open on the calendar.
What works for the, for the real working guys here?
I'm going to Easter.
The twenty-first, is five too early?
Personal.
Okay, can we do a budget meeting then at five o'clock on the twenty-first?
And it'll be an hour, hour and a half at most, because there's not a whole lot, I mean, we don't have, it's just to get things started.
And then we can, you're going to give us some more dates?
Yeah, can we look at the month of April?
Sure. Okay.
I have the fourth, and we're meeting on the fifth, aren't we?
Yes, we're meeting on the fifth.
How about that next week, the week of the eleventh?
That's up to the group.
I'd need to do it either Monday or Tuesday.
Are we excluding Matt on these Mondays? Because we need him here.
How about, how about the week after the board meeting, do it on the twelfth? Can we do a budget meeting that night?
That's sound, I rate right now.
Is that okay, Matt?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Okay, what, can we do another five o'clock?
Do we do a Thursday?
Okay. It may be...
Tuesday, Tuesday.
What are your Thursdays like, Matt?
That's Northside House.
Oh, my goodness, I probably had to be going with you on that. He said, if you can't do the fourteenth, you want to back up, or can't do it?
Would it ever work for you? Or no, if you, if you have to be gone out of town?
Time's a game. Time's a game.
Oh, six-thirty.
Can we do it up, go to four-thirty or four? Is that possible?
That would work.
Yeah.
I mean, is that going to be okay? I mean, let's not...
Yeah, I'd rather do that.
On what date?
On the twelfth.
At four? Which, which time? You give us the time.
Four o'clock, man.
Four o'clock.
As long as that's good with everybody else.
All right, budget.
We'll make it work.
Four o'clock. We're flexible, right?
On the twelfth of April, right?
Twelfth of April, Tuesday, four o'clock.
Okay, what time is the one on the fifth?
The fifth is our regular, meeting is only, it's at five o'clock. It's at five.
Okay, and then can we look at one other one?
Sure.